Down Prescott Valley Regular Town Council Meeting, call to order, January 28th, 2021. Welcome everyone. Pastor Terrell Eldredth, First Southern Baptist Church, would you please come on down for our invocation?
Let's pray together. Father, we remember that the psalmist, King David, said, "Bless the Lord, O my soul, and all that is within me." Bless his holy name. Bless the Lord, O my soul, and forget not, forget not all his benefits, who forgives all your iniquity and heals all your diseases. So Father, this evening, as we come before you, we thank you, that we can bless you, that we can thank you, that we can appreciate all that you do for us. Father, we thank you for the snow and the rain in these last few days, for the water that we need so desperately. We thank you for the hope that you give to us in the midst of a pandemic. Father, we pray that you would be with our, with those who are working against this pandemic, for the doctors and the scientists who are working, to find a cure, for those who are, who are struggling right now with it. Father, we pray that you would touch their lives and that you'd bring healing. We thank you today for our, our first responders and for our health caregivers, who prayed for your protection upon them. We thank you for their dedicated service. And Father, we just want to look forward to the blessings that you have in store for us, for our community. Father, I pray for this body who's here this afternoon. I pray for wisdom for them as they deliberate, as they, as they think about those things that we need to be doing here in Prescott Valley. And Father, we just pray for your grace to rest upon us. We pray for your peace to, to rain down upon us even today, to heal our souls and to give us peace and unity. And Father, we will give you praise and glory for all that you will do this evening, for we pray these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Sir, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kinzinger?
Here.
Councilmember Heppertly?
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Present.
Councilmember Packard?
Present.
Vice Mayor Hunt?
Here.
Mayor Palgura?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thanks ma'am. Move on to item five. Introduce new Officer Benjamin Roger, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Tonight, I am proud to introduce one of our newest officers for the Prescott Valley Police Department, Officer Ben Roger. From, he comes from Tucson Police Department. He's a lateral officer. Ben, if you can come down here, please. I've got a few things that he wrote in reference to his transfer to the Prescott Valley Police Department. Officer Ben Roger is pleased to finally meet all of the members of the City Council and is thankful, thankful for being chosen to serve the community of Prescott Valley as a police officer. He's been married to his wife for 14 years, and they have two amazing children together. His son Ryland, nine years old, and his daughter Avery, five years old, are in this world. Any free time that he has, he loves to spend it with them, which is good. Good job. He is a former resident of Tucson, Arizona. Ben spent nearly 15 years as a police officer with the Tucson Police Department. After a lot of thought and a long decision with his wife, they decided that it was time to live in a safer community that supports its police officers. During his tenure with the Tucson Police Department, he had the opportunity to serve on several assignments. Ben started in the East Patrol Division and served as a patrol officer for four years, upon which time he was selected and assigned to the Major Offenders' Bureau or Unit. He served for three years on that tour, in that detail where his squad made over 250 felony arrests and various investigative details, including with federal agencies. His duties there included surveillance, mobile and static, vehicle assaults, and any other means that could affect the apprehension of wanted subjects. After serving in the MOU, he returned to the East Patrol Division and decided to become a field training officer. Ben has had the opportunity to train a number of officers that, to this day, he is very proud of training and continue to serve, I believe. Ben became a certified tactical flight officer. He was a helicopter copilot and observer. He flew over 100 hours of flying missions with Tucson Police Department. Once again, the opportunity to serve for the major offenders' unit opened up again, and he was selected a second time to serve with that unit as the lead police officer. During that tour, as a general instructor, he was the trainer for all investigative details where he taught the art of mobile and static surveillance operations. Due to budgetary constraints and the political climate in Tucson, several units were disbanded. After his unit was disbanded, he was assigned to the Pond Detail, where he worked out of class as a detective. While there, Ben maintained a heavy caseload and participated in a number of high-profile arrests. After serving with the Pond Detail, he returned to the East Patrol Division until he was selected to serve as the East Division Community Response Team. While serving in that unit, he was also selected as a lead police officer and received training and participation in undercover narcotics buys and bust operations. The city of Tucson has been progressively declining in time. The leadership there has been unwilling to properly staff its streets with officers, leaving many of its citizens unprotected. Ben chose to no longer be a part of that leadership or expose his family to any unnecessary dangers. As soon as he had heard that Prescott Valley was hiring, he could not pass up that opportunity. Once again, he is grateful to be here, and he has been a very warm welcome to our police department since he, his arrival. He looks forward to serving the community for many years to come. So if you guys can actually give him a hand for coming to our fine agency.
Ben, you have anything to say, or that you haven't written that we haven't heard already, or?
No, I'm just happy to be here. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks for joining us. Thanks, Chief.
All right, thanks.
Now, we have a, Ryan, are you taking this one?
Sure. Actually, I'm gonna let Cutter come on up to the microphone. Come on up. Let him do the talking, because he's good at that. Cutter, don't call him Cooper, comes to us from, from Yuma and has a very strong background in marketing, and he's our new Economic Development Coordinator. So he's the guy you call when you want a restaurant to come to town. So he's gonna work hard and really increase our retail tax base. We're looking forward to have him here. He's got three boys, ages 12, 7, and 2, correct?
Damn, that's great. Yeah, perfect.
Not bad, not bad. So we are glad to have him. So Cutter, why don't you introduce yourself a little bit more.
Hi, everybody. My name's Cutter Chamberlain. Like Ryan said, I'm from Yuma, Arizona. Played back and forth a couple times. I've lived up in the area from 2000, or no, 1995 to about 2006. So I've seen this place completely grow to what it is now. There was hardly anything in Prescott Valley when I first moved up here, and it's just blown up. I'm very happy to be here. Thank you all for having me. Seriously, Ryan, thanks for the opportunity. Larry, also. And I'm just ready to get to work. You know, I've already, I've only been here a few weeks, really trying to hit the ground running. I know that there is some needs in the community, especially for a grocery store. I've heard that 1,000 times. So I'm doing my absolute very best to make sure that that happens for the community and doing other things, just making sure that we get the businesses here, you know? We need the sales tax. We definitely need the opportunities, the jobs for everybody. And like I said, thank you for having me. My boys, I have Brody, Cole, and Weston, all three boys. We weren't lucky to have a girl. And my wife, Taylor, so they're happy to be here. They love the area. We were visiting here all the time when we did live in Yuma to get out of the heat, come up here. We love the place. And like I said, just happy to be here. Thank you, everybody, for having me.
Cutter, thanks for joining us. Moving on for our certificates, Planning and Zoning Commission Service Award to John Yater for seven years. John, come on down. Do you have anyone, Ryan? So John, folks, is a, he's part of the Planning and Zoning Commission, which, as many of you know, is a voluntary position. And John has spent many, many hours and many, many days of his life talking and discussing on, discussing how things in Prescott Valley are gonna go. So it says a lot. There's a lot of angry people that sometimes come in front of you, and John has done an amazing job. So, John, why don't you say a few words?
Okay. 1997, I was in a truck with the Director of Public Works at that time, Larry Tarkowski. We were running along. I'd only been in the state for two and a half years, and I was selected to be a councilman. Boy, were things different then. We had the police department. We were building that. I was lucky enough to be working for a company that was involved with that communication part of it. And then somehow I got involved with the Humble Unified School District and, and helped them with the Bradshaw Mountain High School build and their communication system. So I don't know what the heck happened, but all of a sudden, I'm in front of Rick Killingsworth and Larry, and, and they said, hey, you're gonna be a councilman. And Dick Paget was gone. He had moved on, literally, packed up and moved. In that short term I was here, we had the transition of the, of the water. We had people that were gonna use dynamite to blow up a, a mountain to build a car dealership. There was many, many things that happened at that time that we just transitioned to. And in the town of Prescott Valley, we were still trying to find identity. We were trying to figure out how we were gonna do all this. We were always the Highway 69 going to Prescott, and we really had no, no real identity. And we started building that identity during that time. And, and of course Larry, as we're going through this whole scenario in the truck, he's telling, showing me, well, he went to the south side and south and showed me the master house and where the Fane Park is now. And then we go to Fane Road, and we go, go over here, we go over here. And, but the prolific thing was, for me, at that time, who was pretty naive about all this business, is we go east, and there's nothing but open land. And we're east, and we're looking down at the waste dump. And my thought was, boy, am I glad that's down here and the town center's gonna be up here. And that's basically what we, that's basically what we had. And as we went along, and my transition ended with the, with the, the actual, as a councilman, I was moved into Planning and Zoning at that time, which was 1999, I think. And, and through that time, 99, and then I, my employer didn't want me to do it anymore, so I had to end that term in about 2004. But as soon as I retired in 2012, Richard Parker and everybody came to me and said, hey, you're gonna be on Planning and Zoning Commission. So a whole new transition happened there. The dynamics of planning and zoning at that time, and it, when I started back, was overwhelming. It was such a difference between what we had gone through. We had already developed the 2020 plan. Some of the smartest people I've ever known were involved in that. I was lucky enough to sit on meetings. I didn't say much, but I sat in on these meetings, and I was lucky to be there. What needs to be remembered, as far as I'm concerned, in my opinion, is that what we based our community on at the, when we started this community, we should continue to hold that close to our hearts. Don't, don't go overboard. Don't let people talk about, we need to do this, this, and this. Go within ourself here in this community. And I thank you. I appreciate this. Didn't need to get the plaque to be here, trust me. But it's been a great run, and I just love this place. Thank you.
Chief, you coming down for this one?
Yeah.
Give me a Service Award for Ms. Amy Stone, Police Department.
We do things a little different at the Police Department. We actually have our employees kind of write up a little thing for themselves that, so you guys can try to understand who they are as people. And I think it's very important for us. But Amy was born in Chicago, and she was raised there until she was about 14 years old, when her and her father decided to make the step to move to Prescott Valley. It was a wake-up call for her, as you can imagine, coming from the big city. However, Amy was surprised by how much she would love this small town. And even as, as the town has been growing, she still has the same love for it. In 2016, she was able to watch the town grow from a different perspective. She started working for the Public Works Department as their administrative aide. And after two years, she had learned that there was a position within the Police Department, and she took that step and promoted to the Administrative Support Two position, working as the Admin Support Team, completing projects for the command staff. One of her responsibilities is purchasing our vehicles in our Police Department fleet, which is a huge responsibility for us. This is where she plans and schedules the builds of our vehicles and keeps us on the streets on a regular basis, making sure that those vehicles become street-ready and that they are always functioning so that we can respond to our calls for our community. This is her favorite part of the job. She also leads our payroll and making sure that everything is good to go for finance and helps out with special reports and projects. She's an integral part of our administrative staff. She, Amy assists with the bike rodeos for our community and updates our websites on a regular basis. She has received our Unit of the Year Award for 2018 and was just recently awarded the Civilian of the Year Award for 2019. She loves the people that she works with and the relationships that she has built within our department. It is a different world at the Police Department, and I think Amy has learned to really enjoy that kind of aspect of our Police Department. Amy also gives her time to help plan the annual Employee Gala and our Volunteer Banquet when we are in different times other than COVID. We also, she also loves how much fun Amy, actually, we love how much fun Amy brings to our department and our organization. She's a true team player, no doubt. Outside of work, Amy and her two beautiful daughters, who are here today in the back, and her significant other, if you guys want to raise your hands, wave to mom. There you go. Her daughter, her oldest daughter is seven years old, and her youngest is three. And her significant other is here, too, but we won't mention his age. Without their love and support, she would not be standing here today. She also has one more bundle of joy, joining her family, coming up in July. Congratulations. During her free time, she enjoys going out with her family on new adventures. They love to camp and, and spend time outdoors whenever possible. Amy also enjoys getting together with her friends for backyard barbecues, spending times with her dog, and watching her TV shows. Amy is thankful for the opportunity that the town has given her. She enjoys working for and giving back to our community that she can raise her family in in the upcoming years. Congratulations on five years, Amy.
I just wanna say thank you to everybody I've had the privilege of working with the past five years, councilmembers, mayor. Thank you for the opportunities that you continue to present us. Thank you to the coworkers who have turned us into friends and even family. I appreciate every single one of you. Also, a big shout out to Deanna Serino. She isn't here today, but she was my first supervisor at Public Works, and she took the chance on me when no one else did. And I wouldn't be standing here today also without her. So thank you, Deanna, for everything you taught me. And also, thank you to my supervisor now and my admin team. The support that we have and the team that we've created helps get through every single day. So thank you to everybody. And you guys in the back, thank you for everything you do, and it's an honor to work with you.
You guys can come down for photos, too.
All right, moving on, folks. Council comments and communications. We'll start on this side. Councilwoman Dickinson?
We're so grateful for the snow for the last couple of days and for the snowplows clearing our streets so that we could get out. And we're so fortunate to live in such a beautiful area. I was on the fourth floor looking out the windows this afternoon, and what a gorgeous view. And we're so blessed.
Councilwoman Heppertly?
No comments.
Vice Mayor?
Just real quick, we have picked our day for our first meeting for our Fentanyl Working Group. The kickoff meeting will be February 10th at 4:00 PM, and we will meet every second Wednesday after that at the Police Department Training Room. So let me know if you're interested. And then I also want to give a shout out, Dean and I just purchased season tickets to the AZ Wranglers. We need to go out and support our team. They'll help put us on the map even more. Hopefully, people will come and visit and want to go to their games, especially if they're, especially since they're all on Saturdays. They have nine games, and you can purchase tickets at nazwranglers.com.
Thank you. Councilman?
Yeah, a big following up on Brenda's shout out. I'm gonna shout out to this snow removal crew. These people worked probably very long hours and just stand by, because I think it starts again tomorrow, but it's not gonna be as much. But you guys do good work, and we're really glad to have you with us.
Councilwoman?
I just wanted to say thank you for Ryan Judy stepping up to be our now new town manager. And it's so good to see Larry and, and the audience as well, too. So thank you. And it's also good to see Laurie. So thank you for coming back.
Councilman?
Thank you, Kel. I just wanted to mention, I met today with CASA, which stands for Central Arizona Seniors Association. They're located at 9360 Manzanita Circle. And they have a cafe that you can go out and eat every day. They also have Meals on Wheels. They deliver meals to the homebound. The meals are to be delivered at 996 a meal per, per, per serving. They only charge the homebound person $6. So it's a great benefit that they are providing to the community. They also have a thrift shop. They, they'll take women's clothing and knickknacks. I asked them about men's clothing. They says, oh, they don't take men's clothing, because men, we don't go out shop at thrift shops. So they won't take men's clothing, but they are willing to take women's clothing and knickknacks. Then, at the end of each month, and like today and tomorrow, with their thrift shop, normally the thrift shops open from 10 to 3, but at the end of the month, they have their 50% off sale. So, so when they have the 50% off sale, it's from 8 to 2. So today, when I stopped out there for lunch and then went to the board meeting, there was a lot of people out there today, even with the, with the roads have been not as, they're getting a lot better now, but a lot of, some of the people were apprehensive going out yet. So I would recommend, consider joining, becoming a member of thrift shop, I mean, of the CASA. CASA has different levels of membership. Individual membership is $30 per year. And so I, Judy and I joined this last fall, so it's, I would highly recommend it. They are doing a great service for the community. And one thing, granted, it's the first of the year now, but CASA is, is an approved tax credit charity. So you give up to $400 for an individual person, $800 for a couple, get it as a tax credit. And if you have any questions, I'm gonna give you the phone number, which is 928-772-3337. But again, if you have any questions, you can call, talk to Mary Baker out there, or Betty. So that's all I got, Kel. But it's a great organization that's serving the community, and I would recommend taking advantage to go out and let them take you through this facility, let you, show you what they have to offer.
Thank you. I felt like that was like a CASA infomercial you just went through.
I told them I was gonna be that in the future here for them.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Moving on, item eight, Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately for discussion and possible action. Council, you have all had a chance to review our packets, anything we wish to remove or discuss. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Consent Agenda as presented.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Mayor Palgura?
I'm sorry.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to our old business, 9A, Zoning Map Change, ZMC 19-007, Creekside Villas, second reading. Council, I don't, Ryan, we don't have anyone here for this, and if we had any other questions for, previously, we heard about this last time. So if anything else came up that we can have that addressed, I believe Mr. Judy would be able to handle that. If not, we can get a motion.
This is the second reading.
For the second reading, I'm sorry. Clerk, go ahead.
Ordinance number 881. An ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map, ZMC 19-007, by changing the zoning classification of parcels from R1L70 Residential Single Family Limited zoning to C2PAD Commercial General Sales Planned Area Development zoning, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, ma'am. Shall this ordinance pass?
Councilmember Packard? That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, moving on to new business, Appointment to Planning and Zoning Commission, Sandy Griffiths. Sandy here?
That would be me, I think, right?
Yes.
Sandy's not here.
Sandy is not here. So Vice Mayor, you will take this one.
Everyone got to meet John Yater when we gave him his seven-year plaque, and so he was retiring off the Planning and Zoning, and we had an opportunity to appoint a new person. We actually had an interviews, the Mayor, myself, and Councilmember Heppertly. We interviewed three applicants and have selected Sandy Griffiths to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
and Zoning Commission, three-year term. She comes to us with a lot of experience, and both in the construction industry and also as a planning commissioner. And so, we're very excited that she is our new planning commissioner and has applied. And with that, I'd like to make a recommendation to appoint Sandy Griffiths as our new Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
With that motion, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'm sure Sandy's at home probably watching. I just want to say congratulations, and I'm sure you're going to do an amazing job. Moving on. Item 10B, MOU for the Town of Prescott Valley and the YMCA. Mr. Tarkowski, come on down.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, staff, thank you very much for considering this action this evening. This is a great day for Prescott Valley. It's another step forward to something, to accomplish something that has been in the works since the late '90s. And for any number of reasons, like recessions and things like that, we've never been able to accomplish the building of a YMCA in Prescott Valley. I would really like to thank Damon Olson and Dr. Wayne Bennett, who are here, for their yeoman's work on this project moving forward, along with their board members. And if I could, I'd like to ask the board members and the committee members to stand so you could recognize them.
Absolutely.
They came out this evening after taking an action this past week.
Welcome, everyone. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much. Some... Another group that needs to be recognized is Fane Signature Group or the individuals that are on the Board of Directors for Fane Land and Cattle and Fane Signature Group. But as individuals, they have committed 7.2 acres to this project that will give five acres for the site of the YMCA and the parking associated with that. And then, a little over two acres for roadway and infrastructure extension to the project. Just very quickly, as this project moves forward, tonight, you're going to be considering a memorandum of understanding, essentially agreeing that the Town of Prescott Valley and the Board of the YMCA will join our efforts, hold hands, move this project forward with the goal of having a development agreement before their Board and before you by the end of April. Then, the next step would be to go out and do some fundraising. But just to give you an update, we ended up working with the Y and getting the services of Gilright Associates out of New York, I believe it was, or Boston. Anyway, they're professionals that work for YMCA's or future YMCA's all across the country. They came in and did the assessment to determine whether or not there was enough interest, enough population, to go ahead and support a Y in Prescott Valley. After doing their study, which we were partners with Y on in terms of the financial commitment, they had determined that not only do we have the population to support a Y, but also a great deal of enthusiasm for the services that the Y would provide. And so, they came away very surprised at the level of support for this project. Then, a firm was hired called GRO, G-R-O, to go ahead and take the next step. Okay? This organization works for Y's all across the United States and does needs assessment, takes the information from Gilright, and then converts that into space inside of a building, gymnasium, or swimming pool, or whatever it is that the community had expressed an interest in seeing. And so, in January, we moved forward with that part of the process, and GRO has reported to Damon and the Y's Board of Directors, and they've been doing a very good job. They've got another step left, and if you move forward this evening and approve the MOU, the next step will be to go forward and look at the financing for this project and put together some of the final renderings. These are not construction documents. These are the pretty pictures that you use to raise funds with. And Damon and Dr. Bennett may want to speak to that in a second. But what we're looking at doing is continuing to move this project forward, coming back in late April with the final document after Ivan and the attorneys for the Y continue to do their magic with the wordsmithing of the agreements, which is always an easy process. Right, Ivan? Okay? Well, and thank you very much for your work on the MOU. That is much appreciated. So, with that in mind, I'd ask Damon and Dr. Bennett to come up and add any comments they might want to add.
Yes, I'm Dr. Wayne Bennett, Council. Mr. Mayor, staff, thank you for the opportunity to be here. It's an exciting day for us, a project I've been working on since about 1999 as well. The one party that should be recognized most specifically is Mayor Palguda for jumping on this ball and picking up and carrying it, and I think that we would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge that effort, and thank you for your support. We'll see if we can carry the ball for you. The only thing I would say other than that is that we have resources in this community which are excellent. But you've already heard Mr. Tarkowski talk about the resources that we have available to us, because YMCA's are being built all over the world all the time. And it's a very well-established and very well-organized group of people, and we have those resources, and it has made our job not easy, but easier. And we have a lot of work ahead of us, but we are very, very excited about finally being able to get this job done. The needs within this community are massive, and we are in a position to make a big difference in the lives of a lot of people. So, thank you. Let's move forward.
Mayor and members of the council, it's been a wonderful meeting so far, and I'd just like to recap just a little bit of what I've been hearing. Growth in your community, volunteers being recognized by your community, these are all things that a YMCA will only enhance to your community. Not every community gets a YMCA. Every community deserves a YMCA, but not every community gets one. And I say that because every community that gets one normally has support for it, and it comes from the studies that we did and the people that we talked to. But also, and even more importantly, the town has to be in supportive of it. So, by taking this step, I think this really solidifies the fact that the YMCA and the town really want to make this happen. So, we appreciate all of the support and help.
I appreciate you guys. So, Council, do you have anything else for these gentlemen? I'd like to recognize someone that is on your board who is in the audience right now. It's Jennifer Pratt. And Jennifer, if you would stand up so everyone sees you. And Jennifer, I don't know if you guys know or if Jennifer even remembers the first time I met her or the first time we spoke, but it was before anyone even really would even know who I was or wanted to even talk to me when I was running for mayor. And Jennifer had a long conversation about how much she was involved in the first time that trying to get a YMCA here in Prescott Valley. She stayed at it, and she wanted to continue to help, and it's people like her who make a difference for our Board and try to bring Prescott Valley and make it what it is and bring a YMCA. So, for that, I thank you, ma'am. So, give her a round of applause because she is truly amazing. Council, anything else for these fine gentlemen?
Is the pool going to be heated?
Will there be a heated pool?
Yeah. The snow.
If there's nothing else, and with that being said, I don't often make a motion, but I would like to make a motion in this event to approve.
I'll second.
Oh, we already got a second already, right out the door. Are we okay with that, Ivan? Clerk, call the vote on this.
Mayor, you do want to finish your motion, though. Go ahead.
I was going to try to get to it, and Councilman was on it. Let me pull it up, make sure I do it right. See how often I do this? You have yours up. Mine's not coming up now.
I'll read it for you, if that's okay.
Here we go. Well, I got it now. It's a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding with YMCA for Investigation Services determining if a new YMCA can successfully be located in Prescott Valley.
I'll second it.
Clerk, may I call the vote? Thanks, Ivan.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you, folks. Thank you. Mr. Tarkowski?
If I could, if we could invite the Board and committee members to come down for a photo.
Thank you. Moving on. Item 10C, Ordinance Number 887, Town Code Article 1007, Recreational Marijuana, Emergency Adoption. Mr. Leclerc?
Mr. Mayor and Council, first of all, before we get into that, I'd like to comment before Larry leaves that retirement must be agreeing with Larry because he said something about legal work being amazing. I don't remember him doing that in the past. A lot more relaxed, I guess. Just wanted to talk to you a little bit about the vote that occurred in November. As you know, recreational marijuana was approved in Arizona by a large margin. That statute allowed basically for recreational marijuana facilities to be located in various locations in Arizona with no more restrictions than we already had in place for recreational marijuana. And I'm sorry, medical marijuana. And that was the purpose for having the vote. That was the proponents wanted to make sure that any restrictions would be no more than those that were being applied to medical marijuana. In order to encourage the adoption, there were a number of provisions that were added that would allow municipalities and counties to put in a few restrictions. They couldn't put in certain restrictions, but certain restrictions were actually listed as possible. And so, as soon as it was adopted and the mayor declared it as having been, many communities in the state started passing their ordinances to apply those restrictions that had been allowed in the statute that had been adopted. There was a little bit of a disagreement about exactly how that would be done. Some communities just jumped in and did everything immediately as an emergency. Others decided to do it as a two-step process. We were among those that decided to do it as a two-step. And so, we've created two different ordinances. One is a zoning ordinance that deals with using recreational marijuana, selling it, and actually using it in your home. Because as you know, one of the aspects of that is to be able to grow it inside your home up to a certain amount and carry a certain amount with you, and to distribute a certain amount without selling it. And so, there are some zoning restrictions that are being considered, as well as some provisions that we are proposing that you adopt in a new article called 10-07, which would be adopted separately. And those are the ones we're proposing that you adopt tonight, and we're asking you to consider adopting those as an emergency measure so that they'll be effective immediately. The zoning provisions were considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting on January the 11th, and they recommended that it be approved by the council. The normal cadence for that is for you to get that at your next meeting in February. So, you'll be considering that ordinance in February. We can't adopt zoning by emergency. So, you'll have two readings of that ordinance, and then it'll be 30 days before it actually applies. And so, that's one of the reasons why we're proposing that these restrictions be considered tonight and that you then consider reading this only once as an emergency measure and then voting to approve it if you desire to do so. Let me just talk a little bit about what the provisions are as you look at the ordinance. And let me remind you that I get in trouble with the clerk's office if I don't do it this way, so I'm blaming them, okay? But in order to not spend the money to put the entire ordinance in the newspaper, what we'll sometimes do is we will adopt a document, which is the meat and potatoes of the ordinance, and we'll adopt that by resolution, calling it a public record. And then, we can adopt a shorter ordinance that adopts that public record by reference. So, the first vote you would have tonight is a resolution that declares the document to be a public record. Then, you would consider reading the ordinance, and if you decided to read it as an emergency, you would vote to read it as an emergency, then it would be read. And then, finally, you would have a vote on whether it should pass. So, back to the actual provisions tonight. One of the things that the statute that was adopted allowed was for marijuana uses to be prohibited in public property. And so, one of the things you see there is that use, sale, cultivation, manufacture, production, or distribution is prohibited in any town property. And then, it goes on to say that smoking of marijuana or marijuana products would be prohibited on any public property or public space or open space. And that was specifically allowed under the statute, and so, we're adopting that provision. We talk about personal use in a primary residence, and we indicate that personal use in a primary residence has to be done exactly as set out in the statute, and that people can't use alcohol or other substances that would have a flash point below 100 degrees in order to modify that marijuana. In other words, you can't do the things that people would do in a manufacturing facility there in your home. And we talk about limitations on marijuana delivery. That can only be done by the facilities that are licensed by the state. And then, we talk about if a private business says, "We don't want any marijuana being used on our property," then the town can enforce that. And so, that would allow businesses to make that decision for themselves. And then, finally, we do make those restrictions a Class 1 misdemeanor. The Police Department has been checking around and looking at the various adoptions within the state of Arizona and in other states. And the town, as we discussed, is trying very hard to find that balance, to listen to the vote of the people, but also to use the options that have been given to us to make sure that we apply regulations that are reasonable and that will hopefully help us avoid some of the downsides. that are reasonable, and that will hopefully help us avoid some of the downsides that have been found in other areas. Do you have any questions for me?
Counsel?
I have one. So this is to include in any form that medical or the marijuana could be displayed in, as in brownies or gummies or in any other form, correct?
You're talking about in the facilities that sell them?
Yeah, and for use. Like, nobody's allowed to use that in a public area, no matter what the format is of the...
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion to authorize the mayor, or in his absence, the vice mayor, to sign Resolution Number 2177 declaring that certain documented, certain document entitled Article 10-07 recreational marijuana to be a public record, and motion to read ordinance...
You'll want to just do that first.
Can I vote just now? With that, I'll need a second.
I second.
Clerk, call the vote.
It passes unanimously.
All right, thank you, ma'am. And I'm gonna ask for a reading right now, correct?
First of all, you've gotta have a motion on how to read it. Whether you're gonna do it as an emergency once, or whether you're gonna do it the normal way, reading it twice.
Motion to read ordinance number 887, adopting by reference that certain document entitled Article 10-07 recreational marijuana, once by title only as an emergency measure, then place the same on final passage tonight.
Now, we'll need a second.
I second.
It passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, will you please read the ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 887. An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, adopting by reference a document entitled Article 10-7 recreational marijuana, declared by Resolution Number 2177 to be a public record, which enacts a new Article 10-7 recreational marijuana in Chapter 10 offenses in the town code to regulate or prohibit certain aspects of use, sale, cultivation, manufacture, transport, production, distribution, or possession of marijuana or marijuana products, providing that all other article sections and subsections in Chapter 10 not here in amended shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provisions in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provisions shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect, and declaring that this ordinance to be an emergency measure pursuant to ARS 19-142B and 2-05060 of the Prescott Valley Town Code.
Thanks, ma'am. Shall this ordinance pass?
It passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, item 10D, updated high-risk police department policy 306 firearms for approval. Chief, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Tonight, I just want to introduce some changes that we're proposing to use of force policy 306 concerning firearms. It's important for our officers to maintain a certain level of technology involving all of their equipment, and especially their firearms, because it could drastically change their lives or the lives of somebody else. So in this policy change, we made a few minor changes to what we, as a police department, would like to see our officers be authorized to carry as far as equipment that could benefit them and benefit the citizens of Prescott Valley. Have you had an opportunity to review that policy at this time? Okay, so just a real short cover of what we're looking at is the implementation and acceptance of bringing optical and laser sights, the capability of our officers carrying laser sights and optics on their handguns, including their rifles and their shotguns. And in that, we talk about the pistol mounting optical sight systems, the agency-owned pistols. We want to make sure that we regulate exactly what can and cannot be done to pistols that are provided by the town of Prescott Valley. And on that aspect, we also have recently changed the handgun policy concerning personally-owned pistols. So we want to make sure that if an officer elects to have some sort of optic or sight system on their weapon, that they're not just going to everyday individual on the street corner and trying to modify their weapons, that we actually restrict what they can and cannot do for that mounting system to make sure that it is properly installed and is utilized correctly. So we discussed our personally-owned weapons, the battery systems that are involved in that as well, the training requirements, and again, to touch on the patrol carbine, which are our rifles and our shotgun optics as well. So if you have any questions concerning that, I'm glad to answer whatever I could or can.
Counsel, anything for the chief? I think it's pretty cut and dry.
Okay, yeah, it is.
On what you've kinda sent over to us. With that being said, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. Motion to authorize the mayor, or in his absence, the vice mayor, to sign Resolution Number 2176, approving and adopting updated high-risk PVPD manual policy 306 firearms. I second.
Clerk, please hold the vote.
It passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Mayor and Council.
Norm, you're up. 10E, Viewpoint Drive-Pronghorn Ranch Parkway Intersection Improvement Project. Yeah, take your time.
Mayor and Council, the item we have before you is a construction project that we've been real happy to work with the development committee on. It's a project partnership. It's a Viewpoint John Drive-Pronghorn Ranch Parkway intersection improvements. The reason it's a project partnership, the development that's going on at the southwest corner has some off-site improvement requirements. And what I want to show you, so this is what the project sign that we've put up, and it's always nice to show the funding source. And this has been up for a few weeks to let the public know, to advise them of the work that's going to imminent to go on upon award tonight if council so chooses. But this next exhibit probably explains best what we're doing here. Viewpoint Drive has been in place 25, 30 years, and of course, with the growth out in the area, the southwest corner where you see the red proposed new lane widening, that's where the proposed development, the Hammel Project, he's got a proposed, I understand, A&amp;W restaurant plan and some other uses. While they came to us, of course, they've got off-site improvements to do as part of their commercial development. So the part you see in blue is his obligation in order to make whole his obligation for crib gutter and sidewalk, and an additional lane fronting his particular development. Well, staff took a look at this, and we said, well, Viewpoint Drive has been there a number of years. The current pavement section is good for the use that's been in place for the last 25 years. But obviously, with increased use, increased commercial use, we're gonna see many more vehicles per day in addition to the particular weight of trucks, traffic and the like. So the pavement structural section needs to be increased. So the time to do that is now. Council, may we recall, we did the same thing this past summer on Long Look when we had the Park Place rental homes. A little different there, that the developer, we did our improvement out in the road to redo the pavement to match the new pavement section that was gonna go on. We did it independently. Here, we decided to partner with the developer and co-use. So we funded out of our HERF funds to do what you would call the public improvement, which is the green, redo the pavement structural section to a bigger depth for the increased traffic you're gonna see over time. In addition, married it as one particular project. So that obligation worked out. What you're also seeing in this development is obviously with more development going on, if you look more to the east on Pronghorn Ranch Parkway, there's another development going in, and the transportation analysis says they have another obligation to widen that particular road. So rather than do this in a phased approach, which would be a nightmare, the deal was put together over the months, and you can see the pink color in the middle is developer two. We're actually fronting that particular money for their obligation, but they're contractually obligated when they enter a Phase B of Antelope Park, they're responsible for that obligation. So they'll actually write a checkback for their obligation for the town doing that work now. So it was probably easiest for us to broker and construction manage this whole deal, and we did take a contribution from the developer there doing the NW restaurant of 162,000. So he paid upfront. We said, good, when you pay, we'll move forward with the improvements. So likewise, what you're seeing here tonight is basically a project partnership that is, you know, various splits. I don't want to leave out either the Pronghorn Ranch Parkway. You can see the same obligation is there. That's a particular road that will grow in the future off to the west. So at this particular time, you can see the additional lane widening that's going in there indicated by the arrows. So as a staff member, I'm kind of excited to do this project. Our long-range transportation plan said this is an area that's gonna receive lots of congestion. So we're standing ahead of our mobility region-wide with putting in our public funds in order to provide the lane widening. As you can see at the intersection with 89A, you're getting additional two lanes. You can see the double turn lanes and the through lanes and the additional right turn lanes to get onto 89A. So staff put this deal together. We worked very close with our community development department to work with the development community. So really, a great partnership. Likewise, the design engineer for the development actually did the roadway improvement design. This one's a little different, that Kelly Wise Engineering, a local engineering firm, we've had a good working relationship with them. So actually, Davin Associates, our town, through the town engineering agreement, is gonna be the construction manager. But as a subcontractor, they're gonna make sure that the design engineer actually does the construction staking. Part of the logistics we work out, but I just want to point that out, we're further partnering with the engineering community with long-term relationships to move forward with, probably a little weird, but we're confident with our working relationships. Kelly Wise will do the staking, and Davin Associates will manage the contractor bid. Let's go back to that. So we did send it out for bid, and received very favorable bids, as you see there. We received six bids. CLM Earthmovers, a local contracting community, does workforce in the past. Council, may we recall, the 89A viewpoint widening last year was the same contractor. I did have gotten the question, if you look at the bids, it looks like, wow, did they bid enough? Well, that's when you do a closed bid. Actually, CLM Earthmovers is doing the earthwork there. He has an inherent advantage by his equipment being out there. So he's able to bid less, but obviously, he didn't want to lose the bid and not get it. So that's the closed bid process. He doesn't know what his competitors are doing. So we're very confident, and I've talked to the contractor, says, yes, I'm confident with my bid, and I can do it for that particular amount. So you're seeing the improvements that would be put into place. So what you have before you is a motion to award the contractor, CLM Earthmovers, for $609,499.80, and also the construction period service I discussed with the two engineers for $74,850, which is customary to manage the construction. Last thing before I wrap up is I do like to show that this is the current edition of the February Town News, and that same exhibit that I've presented to you, in addition, some little synopsis of the project, will go out to the public for their information, in addition to information tonight. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Norm, what's your timeframe, start to finish?
About five months.
Five months.
Right. So they've already started, actually, some of the waterline work that was on-site. So we look forward to them getting started here about mid-February, and depending on the contractor, but it'll still be open and ready. And once again, we're coordinating with the onsite construction, too. It'll be a nice amenity for that corner.
No, absolutely. I agree. Vice Mayor?
I just want to say that I'm impressed with the bid from CLM, both this item and the next item. This item, they were about 20,000 above the engineer's estimate, which is really good. And the next item, they are below the engineer's estimate, and so they really sharpened their pencil, and I appreciate that. That's good for us. We spend less money.
Davin Associates does a really good job with the engineering estimates, but what I like to look at, too, is at the time you bid it versus the engineer figuring out what the contract community has. This COVID environment has been a little iffy for the contractor. We've worked with them. Some of your supply chains are disrupted. But what I'm most happy with is the clustering of the bids there, and numerous local contractors all competing for this bid. So yes, it's a good benchmark what the engineer thought previous construction projects were, but this is the market at the time, and especially with CLM being confident, yeah, they can do it for that. And as I mentioned, they're already on-site doing the onsite work, so they're confident they can deliver this project. And they've performed well for us in the past. That's why I mentioned 89A projects collectively was about a million dollars, and they did the Glassford Hill Free Flow right was a $600,000 job. So they've got the people and the personnel, and they're excited to go build it.
Right. Anything else, counsel? Not? Can we get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. A motion to award the construction bid to and approve the related contract with the lowest responsive bidder, CLM Earthmovers LLC, in an amount up to $609,499.80, and be to approve an amendment to the town engineering agreement with Davin Associates for Construction Administration Services in an amount up to $74,850 by electronic vote.
I second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
It passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Norm, you're up here again with Glassford Hill Road and Spouse Drive Signal Improvement.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Coincidentally enough, this is another project partnership that came together right at the same time this other one did. So what you are looking at, you can see the project sign that we developed, the Glassford Hill Road Spouse Traffic Signal Improvement Project. So the genesis of this particular project, council may recall, that the Universal Homes, which the Granville communities wanted to improve this particular intersection because there was quite, well, let's look at the project sign. It's been out for a couple of weeks to let the public know that we have the imminent improvement there. Because this particular corner, as shown in the next exhibit, you can see all of the work that's been done over the last year, year and a half on Santa Fei Station Park. So that was actually development impact fees. That was part of new housing to build the park improvement. So I know some of that was done outsourced, and the Parks Department has done, and Community Service have really good job of developing that park. As you're well aware, the access has been exclusive to Santa Fe Loop roads, so it's not as direct as I think we'd all like to see. So staff worked with the development community, in addition to community development, to work with the developers, say it sure would be nice in order to use further development impact fees, the roadway impact fees, to put the amenities in for a northbound left turn in, and obviously, finish that fourth leg of the intersection, which makes sense, because the park improvements have that stub road, as you can see, delineated there. So that was where it got started. Council, may we recall back in August, that any time that you do a signal project, you're about 20 weeks out ordering the poles and the equipment for a signal. So the developer offered as to jumpstart this project with development impact fees to contribute 150,000 towards the signal, buying the equipment and getting it on order. So it's actually been on order since August. We just heard from the supplier that we expect that stuff to get in within a week. So the timing is working out as we speculated. COVID or any other supply chains hasn't affected us, but we'll be much happier when the poles get here, because obviously, about the time the contractor wants to get started, it'll be in the inventory, and part of the work he does is to put that together. So part of my comment is this is development impact fee-funded project. So growth pays for growth in Prescott Valley. So this is the adequate fund in order to pull this particular the growth requires the additional lanes. The spouse signal's been there for a number of years. So when staff started scoping this design, which was actually done by the development community, that it was thought, well, we need to put the fourth leg in there. So while you're doing that particular pole, we're not very far away in the most distant future to needing to move those poles out to the ultimate configuration for a third lane for Glassford each way. As you can see in this exhibit, some of the third lane is there, actually, the deceleration into spouse lanes. So part of what staff looked at, you can see the additional lane widening there for the southbound third lane, which is currently there as a decel lane in easily way. Staff thought it would be a great idea to add a little acceleration lane into the park for that grade. So for a little bit more expenditure, we thought that would be a good use of funding. The other exciting thing is I know sidewalk is a very important thing, not only for the public but council. Do want to point out, this one includes a little bit of sidewalk connectivity there. So that 350 feet of sidewalk we're putting in actually adds miles of connectivity, because you can go, obviously, from the park was a trip generator, but you already have the multi-use path in on Santa Fe. So it was staff recommended to go ahead and put that little bit of sidewalk in, so that anyone traversing the park, you'd actually be able to do a loop through the Granville community with their particular improvements they've put in multi-use path. So it's just a natural that, obviously, if you're going to recreate or take the kids on a stroller, bikes, you've got that particular pedestrian way, which was huge on this project, too. So it sums up some of that, you know, transportation need out there that you can come to the park either way, or actually provide a walk for. So it's got lots of attractions there. So that's part of what we wanted to point out. And of course, the development impact fee funding is one of the next one we'll show. The other interesting thing was when, actually, this exhibit you're looking at is different from the one you have in your packet. The one you have in your packet was, a lot of times, we take the engineer design and we use what's available in our ge... use what's available in our GIS department with some of the mapping we had. Well, the park is so new, Google Earth doesn't have this, it just shows it a big dirt spot. So I wasn't too happy, and I asked the GIS guys, I said, "Can you do anything? I just can't really show that exhibit with a dirt mound there when you have the improvements." So Larry Prentice and Tyler took it upon themselves to say, "All right, princess, we'll work hard for you." So what Google Earth doesn't have, they took it upon the challenge, they actually took their drone that they've had the last year, and they've been playing with it and practicing and getting better with it. They actually flew this site and took the pictures of present-day Santa Fe Park. So this is compliments of the GIS department. So to punk me a little bit, you can't see it, but the dirt mound's gone, but in the corner of the grass field there, they did this to me, that, you see the little ND there? "So that's for you, Norm," is what they said. So they were challenged and they delivered, so it's fun to see that this particular exhibit, Google Earth will not show you, but our drone, very economically, can fly this particular site and give you up-to-date pictures. So this is actually in the Town News. I'll show you that slide, too. It's the twin of the other project. But this shows the park amenities. I like this visibility to the public. This shows development impact fees, growth pays for growth in Prescott Valley, the park amenities paid for parks' development impact fees, the roadway impact fees is paying for the fourth leg into the park, and we're much happier as public work staff because we really feel like the access to the park is just not quite there yet without that northbound left end. So we're real happy the development impact fees is available in order to do that. And we want to thank Universal Homes for actually fronting some of the money because by the time we're able to start this project, everything will be coming in and we can actually finish in the next about four months. So that's some of the background. And last slide I want to show is, as you can see here, a little more detail about that fourth leg intersection, that was that fourth leg that's been planned for many years and provide that access to the park from Glassford Hill. And of course, this is the exhibit that's in our development impact fee report. This is the revised update, as you can see there in, it's 2018, yes, you can see it in red there. So the original development impact fees, which identified projects, that we've been very successful delivering a lot of these projects. I think council's aware, currently, we're in a current study to update the list with newer projects. Well, this particular Glassford Hill Spouse intersection has been one of the projects listed on development impact fees. So when we talk about the different funding sources, like the last project we presented in Viewpoint Pronghorn was HERF funds, this is development impact fees. If we didn't grow, we wouldn't have this revenue source to build and stay up with growth per our engineering studies. So there's a good example you see highlighted there, the Glassford Hill Spouse intersection, been on the original development impact fee report since 2014, and I'm pleased to say this is our funding source that we're able to fund this particular construction project and the new access to the park. So you see that's noted there. And noteworthy there, you can see some of the other projects that we've delivered in the last couple of years. So we're in the process now, we need a new list because we're delivering a lot of these projects, and we continue to have growth, and the funding source is what does these projects. And as I promised, here is the article here with the exhibit that keeps me happy that shows the park amenities. This is in the February Town News on page three, so to let all our residents know what's proposed in there. In addition to the project sign, calling attention to it, this will be some more explanation in the picture that actually shows what you're seeing and what's going to be built out there, and I think it keeps the good information of what to expect out there. So what you do have in front of you tonight is we've received five good bids, and with the low bid being CLM Earthmovers in a bid amount of $442,111.50, and then likewise, the construction period services for Davin Associates to manage the particular project for $72,850. Do you want to caution or not inform council, too, we've already awarded the poles cost back in August, so this is the actual construction cost for the lane widening and the labor to put the poles in. I'd be happy to answer any questions with that long dialogue.
Counsel, if you have anything?
I have a comment.
Yes.
This is going to be a huge improvement in that area, especially for those who play pickleball and have to go down. I've heard a few people comment and basically complain about having to go down and make a U-turn and then come all the way back around to get into the park, and thank you so very much for putting all of this together.
Counsel, that's a good comment, because I know when, that's really, I think, actually, if you looked in your budget books, this was budgeted for next year. So we had some funding left over from this Sunset Lane project, some capacity, so we transferred that funding in order to do this project. But it is very good amenity, and of course, we've always wanted a particular lane widening. I'm glad that we were able to have the jumpstart from the developer to help us along with our funding, because it's just a matter of funding, and of course, we've been building a lot of projects with development impact fees, Sunset Lane really cleared the account. So we're building it back up and spending about as quick as we get it, which is really what we enjoy doing as staff, put those amenities in place when you collect the money.
Great. With that being said, can we have a motion?
With that, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Motion to award the bid to and approve the related construction contract with, to the lowest responsive bidder, CLM Earthmovers LLC, in an amount up to $442,111.50, and B approve an amendment to the town engineer agreement with DAVA and Associates for Construction Administration Services in an amount up to $72,850.
Can I have a second?
I'd like to second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
It passes unanimously, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Norm.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good job. Moving on, item 11, comments from the public. Consideration of discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to three minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. At the conclusion of the unscheduled comments, individual members of the council may respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the mayor, or they may ask that the town manager to review the matter or ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Folks, this is your time to come on down, and if you have any comments or questions, you get to speak your mind. And we have one person, come on down, ma'am. Welcome.
Mayor, Council, my name is Nikki Rossen. I am the marketing and outreach manager for MAPFORS. For those of you that don't know, MAPFORS is an anti-drug organization. We educate and raise awareness about substance abuse issues throughout Yavapai County, and we just want, on behalf of MAPFORS, to extend our thanks for tightening the regulations around recreational marijuana. And we support you in building healthier communities. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks for coming. That was one of the shortest ones we've had in a while, so. Anyone else would like to come down? Anyone? No? Well, at this time, move on to item 12. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Clerk, call the vote, please.
It passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks for everyone for coming out. It really shows a lot, and we appreciate you. Have a great night.